We'll consider it.
Well, I just got to trade with the public. Somebody's kind of public. I gotta sit back down again and clean up all my stuff.
Okay, sounds like we're ready to go. Call order, the City of Elsworth planning board meeting for June 1st, 2022. I'd like the board members to introduce themselves.
Mark Berch, board member.
Nelson Gill, board member.
John Delio, chairman.
Sid Lyles, vice chairman.
Patrick Lyons, alternate.
And considering there's only five members here tonight, Patrick will be voting. Can I have a motion on adoption of amendments from April 6th, 2022, regular meeting, and April 27th, 2022? If there's any additions or deletions you want to bring up?
So moved, adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Pre-application sketch plan review for a major subdivision entitled Morgan Woods for applicant owner Morgan Woods LLC. Proposal is to create a seven lot major subdivision on Bucksboro Road, tax map 31, lot 46-1, located in the rural zone district. Is there someone here representing Morgan Woods?
Stephen Salisbury.
Okay, what was your question?
Richard McMullen bought this property a couple of years ago and would like to have an opportunity to develop some home lots on this property adjacent to his motherland that he owns. If you remember back, three, four years ago, we permitted a small gravel pit just to the east of this location. You can see we've got seven lots laid out with some potential future growth, expansion. I've left some opportunities to extend the road network onto his other land. His intention is to install city water and build a road to city specifications. So hopefully, once he gets it built out, the city would accept the road.
Anything else, Steve?
Nope, that's all. Sorry.
We're waiting for more.
Pretty generic, nothing out of the ordinary here. Staff did ask about the right of way. We selected 60 feet. That's my MO personally. 60, 50 feet is not enough to get to your utility poles and the ditches all within the right of way. So I like to go 60.
Now, is he planning on paving this while it's still his property?
Yes. You'd have to turn it over to the city.
Yeah, but I mean, there has been some that have not been paved and you're right. I mean, if it's turned over to the city, it has to be paved.
Yeah, no, that would be his intention. Once the water lines in some houses, a couple of houses in, I'd assume he'd pave it then and ask for acceptance.
And it looks like he's already brought up the entrance up to level of the road, which I'm sure DOT is.
Correct. They've given us an entrance permit there because it was a separate lot.
And say again about the extension, the possible future?
Yeah, you can see on the sketch there, there's a couple of future, future roads labeled so. One at the cul-de-sac and one abreast of lot two, just giving it an opportunity. Once he exhausts the gravel resources out there to bring a loop road around. We'd have to also come at that point to council for a zone change because that, that gets into the industrial zone part of his land. But I, I would expect or would hope council would give that a favorable recommendation. Pretty customarily, they'll move the zone line for landowner.
The way you have the Mickelson way laid out, it follows the boundary line for a little bit.
Yes.
Is that because of the wetlands there?
Correct. Yeah, I was avoiding the, keeping the wetlands impact as low as I could. There's still 12,000, 13,000 square feet of wetland impact, but.
Oh, he's telling true. With lot two, is it correct to assume that they'd be, you're looking to develop down the lot, whatever? The front part?
Yeah.
Not the back part?
Probably.
Because they're separated with the?
Wetland, I mean, the owner could. If they're prerogative, they can choose to build in the back if they want to permit the wetland impact.
Okay.
But there should be enough room there. That's a pretty sizable lot.
Is that, is that why that lot is bigger than the others?
Yes. Yeah. I expect the leach field would be in the back and the building would be in the front near the road ideally. We've got our soils tested and I, I haven't plotted them yet for you, but we can get septic systems on all these lots.
And you're working with Tom as to placement of the hydrants?
Yep, yep. He's asked for three, one in the beginning, one in the middle, and one at the end.
And you can provide that?
Yeah, we're gonna have a city water main in there.
If I'm not mistaken, I think they have to.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, what I was looking for, I think I found the deed for this piece of property that one, that was transferred to Morgan Woods. It's a four-page deed. Does that sound right? What I'm interested in is on the last page, it has some restrictions. Maybe if I show you this, if this is the actual deed for the property?
I don't think I supplied the city to copy the deed. I'll have to look into that.
But it, the restrictions, one thing, the property here, hereby conveyed shall be used for residential purposes only. Any vent dwellings situated on the property are destroyed by fire or an avoidable accident. Replacements shall be similar structures. There shall be no mobile homes or trailers on the premises. Then it talks about not having animals or poultry other than household pets. But the one that's kind of most interesting is the grantees herein agree to pay their proportionate part of snow removal and maintenance and upkeep of the road, notice Woodland Road leading from the highway and passing the above described lots. I mean, I mean, I'm guessing this piece of property was at one time.
It was part of that.
Included with the Woodland Roads lot?
Correct.
But I mean, how would that apply now? I mean?
I don't know that it would.
Yeah, I don't think it would, but I.
Yep. I hadn't even noticed that.
Could the city charge these people for snow removal on Woodland Road?
Yeah. I mean, it's a city road. Woodland Road's a city road, so there's no maintenance costs. It's just one of those things that just goes away.
And I guess the only other thing I thought of, and Elaine and I went on a phone call with one of the lawyers. It's interesting with the animal part and how that plays into the new constitutional amendment for food. And the lawyer thought.
To be determined.
Yeah, thought more applied, the city couldn't enforce that, but can your subdivision say you can't have animals? I mean, obviously, that constitutional amendment is brand new and it's already fighting in court over hunting.
Yeah, yep.
But curious to know.
We'll have to carry those covenants on our subdivision and the future lot owners can do with them what they want.
I guess the only covenant there that maybe apply to our view is the residential use only and that the possible future roads onto the larger land, you won't be proposing to have any commercial trucks.
No, that's gonna be residential in nature as well.
Yeah, so.
Hence the zoning change?
That's right.
Yeah. So, but even once this is done and the gravel operation's still going, they're not gonna try to use this road. They already have their own access.
They'd have a different road if it was gonna be commercial.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Kind of along the same line as one or two, I mean, on the final, it was approved on the final site plan. Would we even want to have that possible future road included on the site?
I wouldn't show it necessarily. I just demonstrating to you that we're thinking of the future.
Okay, yeah.
Making those provisions now because he's gonna remain, he's gonna own the lands east of the road. So he can do whatever he'd like in the future.
Any other questions?
And these are just single, idea will be single-family homes?
The proposal will be for residential. Under the new legislation that the governor signed, I guess you can have one to four units on all these lots if you so choose.
Yeah, but you're not, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter, but the idea is that for single-family residences plus whatever else you could have.
Yeah.
So would, if it's approved, would, under the new law, would we have to specify that each lot is for only one structure? Or does that allow, if it's approved, then does that allow you in the future to?
So we are, we already under the zoning district allow for duplexes. We still have. I've not, well, basically, I have not analyzed the new law for any conflicts. I was part of Main Municipal's working group to support their role on the commission that kind of resulted in that law. Ultimately, Main Municipal Association did not support its passage, so I'm not up to speed on what it contains. Are you looking to answer the question of whether we could limit these lots to single-family dwellings?
Yeah, if, if he says, like, say lot one, if a person puts in one house, but then decides, what do you say from the new law, could put in four dwelling?
One to four units, dwelling units.
So would that person have to come back to the board to say, okay, well, yeah, three?
Well, then it might constitute a subdivision and I think the law should, I hope, also provide for, you know, if these are on septic systems, if you can't fit four, four units worth of septic system on a two, three acre lot, then.
Yeah, you can't exceed. You can't exceed the septic requirements, so.
No, life safety, you can't ignore life safety, can't ignore plumbing code, septic codes.
Basically, the law is that the city, any municipality can't limit a single, a lot like this, additional units up to four as long as everything else on the lot satisfies the minimum lot standards. So if, if they, if, or life safety and septic, so it's basically here, you can build on this lot up to four lots if you can make it work. We can't say, no, you can't do that. That's the kind of the gist of it. And I don't think that requires planning board approval unless it's where to trigger subdivision because you put three or more dwellings on a single lot, that also triggers subdivision, so. But they're good, pretty good sized lots. What's the minimum lot size for this zone?
Eighteen.
I think forty thousand.
So half an acre?
No, about an acre.
An acre.
Forty thousand.
Just so.
Almost an acre.
So a few of them are just, so basically, they're one acre lots and then what else is needed because of the wetland?
That's right.
So we could still potentially get, you know, secondary units on it, accessory dwelling units. And then the larger lots, maybe four.
Yeah, Elsworth has a net lot area calculation. You have to extract easements and wetlands and things like that and still maintain a minimum forty thousand square feet, which I've done on these lots.
Can I ask a question?
Not at the moment.
No. Not just that, there's a public hearing coming up.
I don't have any other questions.
Anything else, Steve?
No.
Okay, then I will open the public hearing. If you'd like to ask a question, please come up to the podium.
My name is Billish Young and I'm a Woodland Heights, or whatever it was called, property owner for almost 40 years. And your reference to the deeds for the Woodland property was, was interesting because it's my understanding that on Woodland Road where we live, you can't have commercial industry. You can't have the farm animals and all of that. So does this property fall under that deed from what you were reading, John?
I have no idea.
I don't either, but I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, when you're talking about building a multi-complex unit on these, is that a commercial industry? Does somebody make money on that? No, so that's not relevant. I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking the question because I don't know.
The prohibition on your property for not having those type of animals was most likely when the, when the subdivision was created.
Exactly.
And it was the developer who put that restriction on those properties.
So it's changed because there's a new developer that wants to do this? How does that work?
No, the covenants run with the land, so if this lot is subject to those covenants, they remain.
But to build a four, like an apartment building where you rent out units, that's not.
It's residential.
That's residential. So they're gonna wrap that around the industrial concrete plant that we have now.
That'd be adjacent to it.
Because that's so industrial.
Yes.
Well, right now, they're not planning on any of that. They're just, this lot right here, it butts that property. But in future, as I understand it, potentially, future phases, they may need to see, to change the zoning on that butted property from industrial.
And to an extent, that these guys that we're talking about tonight actually provide a buffer between you and the industrial use.
You're right. Right. Okay. So the gravel pit and the concrete plant are zoned industrial. And now they're gonna wrap the residential around that. Was that, was that always, so the buffer, the buffer that's between Woodland Road and the concrete plant, there was a zone there that was zoned residential or was it, because I, I'm trying to understand.
It's currently owned residential. I think there was some zoning changes made in that stretch of Bucksboro Road 15, 20 years ago, 15 years ago.
Up to where it butts Woodland Road. That was, that was zoned, I thought it was zoned from when I, when I was talking about you folks with the concrete plant, that it was zoned industrial all the way up to Woodland Road.
No.
No. So the buffer was this piece of land that McMullen has. He bought, he, when he purchased that, that was a multi-usage lot?
Well, it was zoned rural. This, this piece that we're discussing right now.
Is zoned rural?
Yes.
Okay. But it's under the deed perhaps that we on Woodland Road have to abide by?
If the, I'm sorry.
Just wondering.
Just if the.
I mean, you brought it up that it.
No, I know it. And I think that's for.
I'm just questioning it just because.
Staff or Stephen to figure out whether that applies.
Yeah.
Most of it's not relevant to our review as a board, as long as it's of residential uses. There's no covenant saying you can't have houses on it, then, you know, we just have to, our job isn't to enforce the covenant. The private enforcement rights.
No, I just thought the, the animal part of it was interesting because of the new constitutional amendment.
Yeah. And the wetlands, but the wetlands are gonna be, they're gonna, they're gonna be held in.
He has to take the wetlands into.
They're gonna be protected. Thank you, Mark, for that. Bingo. Okay. Just wanted to know.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the public? And I'll close the public hearing. We don't need any, there's no action on this. So we'll wait to hear from Stephen in the future.
Mr. Salisbury, I have one question for you before we dismiss this, if I may.
Absolutely.
Why would there be no lot eight? Just personal interest.
Where would lot eight be?
Next to seven.
He just wanted to retain that side of the road for now.
I see. Very good.
He's only, you know, he's gonna develop a lot or two every year. He's no rush, so.
I see.
Didn't want to pay taxes on home lots. He's not gonna get them built on for a while.
Yeah.
Chair? Can I just add with each of these sketch plans that we're talking about tonight, it would be a good time, if you're inclined, to do a site walk on any of them to think about that.
Anybody interested in moving a sidewalk on this one?
Too many wetlands.
Will there be, where the road goes, there's a wetland, the road goes over some wetland. Will there be drainage underneath there and?
Oh, yes.
That's how I read it.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was talking to Nelson, so is anybody want a sidewalk? Okay. Okay, next one, pre-application sketch plan review for major subdivision entitled Jesse Beach subdivision two, applicant RPM Properties LLC and owner RPM Main Enterprises LLC. Proposal is to create a 12-lot major subdivision on Garland Road, Jesse's Beachway, tax map 107, lot 17, located in the rural unlimited residential LR zone district. So here's somebody representing.
Stephen Salisbury for the owner. We have, I received the TRT comments a few months ago and they picked up on the fact this is sand gravel aquifer and we're gonna reduce our lot count by one lot to get the density down, so we do not require a study. It was close, just, just under the 100,000 per dwelling unit density. So we're gonna combine lots nine, 10, and 11 into one lot. And I believe the owner's negotiating actually with the buyer to sell those, that area to, to them.
To?
To the, but to the south, Caribou Development. There's a gravel pit there. He wants, he wants the resources that are up in there. So that will take care of that issue because we had that issue on, skip the little gravel pit. We had to do the hydrology study there. They tend to get expensive for the, not enough return for the investments, so.
I'm sorry, so those lots get combined?
Yeah, so our lot count's gonna go down by a couple lots. We'll end up probably with a 10-lot subdivision. On the same number acres brings the density.
Okay, and there'd still be a lot, where nine, 10, 11 are now, there's still gonna be a lot in that side of the road.
That's right, yeah. Even though it's going to buy the little stuff to lot it, because this whole parcel, including Caribou Development, is already an approved subdivision, we're just modifying a previously approved subdivision. Unlike the earlier development I was talking to, Garland Road will be just extended and maintained as a private way. No intention to turn this over to the city. The homeowners association will be formed and maintained by them.
Well, how would the, this is a homeowners association for, for here road.
Yeah.
But you come in off the road with other houses and they go to other subdivisions.
Yeah.
So you will have to share.
Share in that cost or take over that.
And those are private?
Those are all private roads up to Route 180.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, either share in the cost or just take care of them themselves.
Is there gonna be some sort of covenant written into something or other or?
Yeah, yes, it would be a homeowners association and conditions on the plan.
I'm writing down, Steve, I mean, is, is there one single owner, because that road goes down into Mariville.
It does. There's a bunch of homes out there.
So there, is there a homeowners association for that one?
Yes.
That it concerns us.
Yeah.
But then along Peninsula Drive, I believe, that was subdivided.
That was subdivided by.
I think Brenda Collins, I believe.
Ah, no, it was actually developed, I believe, by this owner. Main Woodland Properties, I believe, developed those as well. We did that subdivision like 20, 25 years ago.
And that has like 10 or 12 lots?
Yeah, just a few houses on those camps. Nothing substantial has taken place over there.
No.
Are you in need of question? Are you in need of question?
I'm just curious about the road makeup and how all the maintenance works together, but.
Yeah.
That'll be up to you and your lawyers.
Yep, the homeowners at Peninsula Drive have a pretty active association. They grade that road pretty frequently.
Are lots or old lots, let's see, nine, 10, 11, 12, how close are they to the gravel pit operation? I mean, is it right adjacent or is there a buffer there or?
It's close. It's wooded. There's a, there's a section of woods in there.
How, I mean, do you not have any sense of how wide that is from the back of the lot to the?
Oh, maybe 100 feet, some places more.
So someone's gonna go out there and spend a bunch of money on a land that's right adjacent to the gravel pit?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess. The pit's been there for.
Which is an interesting question as opposed to, I mean, we obviously in a sense don't care of it.
Yeah, sometimes it's active, sometimes there's nobody going in and out of that gravel pit. It's been there as long as I've been around.
Well, it appears to be some sort of RV storage or whatever back there too, in the gravel pit area, with a bus and, unless I was on the wrong gravel pit, which is possible.
I actually haven't been in the pit for a couple of years. I don't know what's going on in there.
My first time was today, so.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I guess another question, not, doesn't have anything to do with our review process, but I'm considering the, the licenser of the dams, which hasn't been finalized yet.
No.
And if, 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 I mean, it'll probably be years if it happens. I mean, whoever wins that case, somebody's gonna end up suing. But I mean, the possibility, doesn't the possibility exist that Graham Lake becomes Union River?
Possibility.
And these lots no longer have shore frontage?
That's right.
Okay, and the owner realizes that?
I don't know if he does or not.
It's river frontage.
Yeah, right.
Well, the river's gonna be a mile.
Long ways away, channels on the other side of Peninsula Drive.
Okay, I was just, I was just kind of curious. And you said the Caribou Development, I mean, the nine, 10, 11, they're in the, most likely gonna buy that.
Yes.
As a buffer to this gravel pit.
Buffer to their pit, yeah.
But I mean, they could end up building a house there or.
They could.
Are we far enough, Tom, are we far enough along in this to, you talked about fire protection or?
Just that they will need cisterns, but we won't be able to really determine that on this review here.
Okay.
The Garland Road's a private road?
Yes.
And does it, there's no concerns with increasing the, so is it existing all the way through or you'd be?
No, it stops at the, it stops at the line between lots one and two now.
Okay, and there's no concerns with the way the road has the capacity to handle the increased?
Yes.
And it's still satisfying, but.
Yep.
I don't know if you can move back, but I mean, the first part of Garland Road only has a 33-foot right of way. You know, a little, probably a couple hundred yards in, then it goes to 50-foot.
That's right.
Yeah, and I guess my question is that still compliant with city's requirements for roads?
I guess that would be up to staff.
Well, haven't really gotten into it yet.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to look for problems, I just want to make sure, you know, that that's addressed, that. know, that that's addressed, that I just expect, I just see this all the time in my work.
I mean, the right-of-way was like that back when the other woodland property developed the subdivision kind of around the corner.
Yeah, yeah, I guess the reason I raise this is sometimes, you know, this was first was approved, how many years ago has Garland Road been there, you know, if standards changed, and now you're adding on to the road, does the existence of the road still satisfy the new, does it satisfy the current standards?
It's actually very similar to our last project on the agenda is proposing access over an existing private way, and it begs the question of, more so in this case, because it goes directly onto a state road and not into a state road that's part of the urban compact, but if you were proposing Garland Road now, you'd need an entrance permit, so does DOT want to see an amended one? I think that they will.
Is this something you have to inform MDOT on?
I hadn't even thought of that. We have not ever approached MDOT about that intersection before on any of these projects we've worked on off Garland Road.
Might be good if someone checked, although I can't imagine it'd make any difference.
It could make a big difference if, I only, again, I'm out with the problems raising it, so Steve, and to make sure we've got it all, it could be nothing, we could be fine, but any time you expand an existing road, especially that's private and it's based on right-of-ways, that's been there around for a while, I've seen there's, frequently there might be issues, so I just want to address.
I think it's fair commentary, I mean, this is pre-application sketch, right, so this is the feedback, recommended due diligence, not necessarily required.
I'm all for, yeah, I'm all for more housing in Elsford, so just, you know, make sure we're doing it right.
And the developer anticipate paving his section of the road, or?
No, no, not at all.
And then turn it over to the city, it'd have to all the way go out, all the way on the highway, which is a fair trek.
Yeah, I don't think the, the right-of-way would not meet the ordinance. Any other questions for Steve on this one? And I'll open public hearing, if anybody has any comments, come up to the podium, please, and state your name.
Good afternoon, my name's Richard Malaby, I live in Hancock, but I own the first four properties on the left side as you turn into Garland, I think on the tax map, I'm not sure it's a tax map, they indicate them as 16, 16-11, and 16-1, and I am here, uh, just about concern for the road, whether or not it can sustain the traffic, I was wondering if the developer was going to make any improvements and what their level of improvements were going to be. Historically, the homeowners association have done a very nice job of maintaining the road, I must confess, but I'm concerned with the impact of, of the additional traffic and whether or not an entrance permit would be required, and those are my issues.
I think that's all questions that staff and the app going to have to work out as far as.
Okay.
You know, going over your section of the road and how, you know, the additional traffic, what impact that has on your road.
Understood.
Obviously, there's several subdivisions out there that are.
Absolutely. And commercial use down the other end, a lot of use, yeah, I get it. Okay, thank, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? And I'll open the public hearing.
Who? Just going to put my name on this.
Oh, okay, thank you. Any comments on this one, Elena?
Um, not, not really just yet, I mean, they're still mostly questions, and we'll see more when there's a preliminary, same question, if you are inclined to do a site walk, now's a good time to schedule it. Um, and the, you might want to look at the hydrogeologic part, because if you, I think it says that if you feel it's warranted, even though the density isn't triggered, that it can be required, so I think that's what it says, so may be worth considering, because we don't have a ton of places where we have aquifer, and it's more impacted if you extract gravel over it and remove the filtering.
Is that something we pass by the water guy, what's his name?
You could.
Guy?
Um, the watershed steward.
Yeah.
John.
Yeah, right. I mean, it seems like that would be a first step, reasonable step?
Yeah, I think he would have insight on that.
There you go. And he comes to the TRT meeting sometimes, right, or not?
Um, he doesn't regularly, but his boss does.
He could perhaps be invited to this next one.
Could be engaged.
Okay, moving on, number five, revision to improve subdivision entitled Happy Town Heights for applicant owner Jody Montana, the proposal is to remove the automatic sprinkler system covenant for one and two family dwellings and townhouses from one of the three lots in existing subdivision located on Happy Town Road, tax map 89, Lot 2-2, no new lots will be created, the subject property is located in the drinking zoning district, drinking water zoning district. So here's someone here representing the applicant owner. Please state your name.
I'm Jody Montana.
Okay.
So my realtor was supposed to be here to represent me and backed out on me at the last minute, so.
And so here you are.
I'm winging it.
So I think we, we understand what you're trying to do, because, I mean, maybe Elena can bring the board up to speed, because we've, this is a three-lot subdivision, originally had a requirement for sprinkler systems, it went through, went to the council, ordinances were changed, lot restrictions, conditions were changed, and they've already changed, what, one or two of the three?
Yep.
And they didn't change.
Right.
This lady's, because she wasn't here to say, I want to do it, if I remember correctly.
Right, yep, yes.
I lived in Florida, so I couldn't make it.
So the, the, um, those three lots were created in a 2019 subdivision, and yes, that happens to be the same person who approached the council about changes to the fire protection ordinance, um, so you've seen legal memos on that topic, it did not prohibit the use of sprinklers, um, but it removed them as an option, so that was what motivated the previous amendment, and yes, Ms. Montana wasn't available to sign off on that, previous approval that you amended the plan, I think, late last year, um, so this is basically the same thing, just capturing her lot now, um, so the, provided a proposed condition of approval to be met before the plan is signed, and my understanding is that the listing agents that prepared this application have spoken actually with Steve Salisbury, as he was the one who prepared the previous versions of the plan, but he was not able to provide it yet because of his workload, um, so what I'm looking for with that condition is before the boards, if you approve this, before the plans are signed by you, that it cleans it up again and clarifies that, you know, it's superseding the past plan to the extent it needs to, and now all three lots are captured, and just make sure it's all clear for any future research, sales, et cetera. And there's a letter from Thomas in there.
Right, I was going to say, and this is fundamentally a thing that we rely on, Tom, to say yea or nay to.
Yeah, the letter's in there with the.
And you've said yea.
If I remember, if I remember correctly, is there a fire pond close to this subdivision, which is what you think the chief base?
Correct.
Be okay on the other two lots?
Seems straightforward enough.
Any questions, any other questions from the board, Ms. Montana? If that's the case, and I will open the public hearing, if anybody in the audience has any comments or questions about this item, it doesn't look like it, it was a public hearing. Would somebody like to make a motion? Including Elena's suggestion about the condition.
I move that we approve the proposal to remove the automatic sprinkler system covenant for one and two family dwellings and townhouses from one of the three lots in the existing subdivision located on Happy Town Road, tax map 89, Lot 2-2, no new lots will be created, the subject property is located in the drinking water zoning district, with the condition that the previously approved plan shall be revised to include Lot 2-2, shown as Lot 4-3, and clarify that it will supersede previous approval.
Well, second, second for sure. All those in favor?
Thank you so much.
Tell your realtor that you don't need them.
Yeah, if he charges you, you know.
Yeah, I don't know, some of those real estate guys.
Yeah, some of them, I would like, I know, good one.
Uh, next on the agenda is a pre-application sketch plan review for major subdivision and major use site development entitled WL Properties LLC, for applicant owner WL Properties LLC, the proposal is to construct phase development of 142 multifamily dwelling units, Phase One to consist of 74 units, the subject property is located off of Down East Highway, tax map 22, Lot 13, in the commercial limited residential shoreline and resource protection shoreline zoning district. Is there someone here representing the developer?
Hi, yes, I'm Shelley Lazott, the agent for Artifacts, and Scott Palatier for WL Properties is also here to answer questions. I have some full-size plans, if anybody would be interested in full size.
Sure.
Yep.
This is just a, a bigger version of this guy here?
Rick and I can share one up here.
We will.
We get along okay.
At least for the moment. Scaring around here.
Yeah, just getting this around a bit.
So as the chair said, the proposal is to create a multifamily housing development with 74 units in the first phase, up to 142, maybe, you know, give or take at a later date, and we have had a meeting with Elena and a bunch of the other city interested parties, and so we're here to answer any questions that you might have. I know there's a lot of information, the, the access is from Eastwood Lane, if Elena mentioned before, that is a private, that's a private road, and for this lot, they have access via an easement to cross that.
Perhaps, first of all, could you explain why you picked Eastwood Lane, I mean, you'd also, would you have access to Resort Way? I just kind of wanted why you decided to come out.
From the survey information that we have obtained, you have a copy of there, it looks as if that easement to Resort Way is for utilities, it doesn't specifically say that they have the rights to travel across it, so, I mean, as for vehicles, that we don't know for sure if they actually have the rights for vehicles at this time.
So if that was resolved, and if you could use vehicles on Resort Way, would that be an option that you'd want to consider?
We looked at it, right now, the current access is, is sort of developed there, I mean, we could do utilities, you know, either way as a.
Sure. I'm thinking just about walkability into the subdivision to the Walgreens and the Hannaford and whatnot, and it just seems that that might be preferable from a walkability perspective, but.
True.
Just an idea that's kicking around in my forehead.
There, there are, there's also an easement, I'm not sure if it's 10 feet or 20 feet, all the way around the extents of that property, that was developed back when, I believe, the resort owned that property, so, and I think that's like a pedestrian easement for walking path or whatnot, so, I mean, there could be a potential to connect into that through, as a walking, you know, sidewalk or what, whatever.
I think a proposal, again, it's excellent, we need housing, very excited about the prospect of this, but with all those people, you know, I think pedestrian access is critical, so whatever proposal you come back with, I think we'd all like to see how you address that, and ensure that folks, you know, aren't forced to drive or walk along areas that don't have sidewalks and dangerous roads, and I think, you know, I would imagine that would help marketability, too, if people know, okay, I could walk safely to the Hannafords.
And as part of it, it might be useful just to even, you know, do some typical, how far is to walk from this spot to that spot in the, in the development.
I'd be in trouble living this close to Finelli's Pizza. Have to do a lot of walking to make up for that.
But I have to say that this, I mean, this is going to generate a lot of traffic in there somewhere, and, I mean, I guess, so let me just say that, and the other thing is that if, if, I mean, this is a sketch plan now, but if it came back with something like this, in the sense of, you know, approving Phase One and, or whatever, and Phase Three is dissolved in the distance, they would have to come back to Phase Three, right?
Come back for it, well, so they can, they can permit phased development and look at it all now, um, and then the phases wouldn't, so we don't have a good way that it's laid out in the site plan review ordinance, it's somewhat addressed in the subdivision, um, but it could be that they just come back with the 74 and forget the rest, it could be that you look at it as those three or, or some other scheme of phases, and, you know, you have to kind of finish one before you go to the next one, and you've got timelines.
One of the things I'm concerned with, we brought this up at that workshop that we had, which was, you know, you have this big giant thing that's been divided into two or three pieces, and if you look at the whole thing as a, as an entity, then there's, you know, X traffic, right?
Mm-hmm.
And if you look at the first phase, the second phase, and the third phase, you know, those are significantly less traffic per phase, and if you approve those incrementally, you know, you're missing the big picture, I guess, is the point.
Absolutely.
So I would just, however this, that works out.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, in this presentation, it needs to be considered, but this is, you know, these are, these are non-trivial numbers that you're talking about, and those intersections with one, with one, I guess, are, are not the best in the world.
A lot of traffic.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic, and there, and there is a, you know, left turn there, well, center-left, but at the one, but, you know, as they come out onto one, as they come out onto one, and those are unmarked roads in terms of center lines and things like that, and that's, you know, I can't imagine putting another lighter in there or anything like that, but at the same time, you want to make it as safe as you possibly can, and, and that's not trivial, I don't think, in this particular case, so.
I, I did take the advice of the review team and contacted DOT, and I spoke with, his name, I've lost his name at this point, and I emailed him, and we discussed it, and using the trip generation book, it, it doesn't actually warrant a traffic movement permit through the DOT, they generate about a half a trip per unit at the peak hour, and.
At the peak hour.
At the peak hour, so over, you know, over 100 trips, you would require a section of one through six permit, and then a full permit would be. six permit, and then a full permit would be after two hundred trips at the peak hour. And so, in this case, even the full build-out at a hundred and forty, some odd trips wouldn't, wouldn't trip the full.
Yeah, but the point is that seventy-five, let's say seventy-five trips, peak hour, which I might take issue with, but that's another whole story. You know, but putting those seventy-five on top of what's already there is, is an issue that, that we can't, it's, it's not like those seventy-five new ones exist in, you know, like a vacuum, and it, but they, they're added on to something else, which makes, you know, takes something else from like, yeah, to bad. So, I, I would be looking for significant detail anyway. But, and the other thing is that the, that the ITE trip generation stuff, which is what you and the guy are looking at, you know, there's, there's a range, you know, and, and I'll bet you're close, and if you're close, that's close enough to, to warrant some extra effort. And that's all I have to say about that. But I agree with the, the idea with sidewalks and things like that, I mean, that's critical as well.
I mean, at this stage, as you, as you proceed, you're just looking for phase one to be approved?
All three.
All three.
And that's, I was going to say earlier, I think I've encouraged them to look at the full thing and get those phases permitted.
A little confused because, I mean, phase one is in, it's the first phase, but phase one is in dark, and the other two are kind of light.
How far is phase two from Merrick Street?
We did talk about that and looked at that. I don't know the actual distance. I didn't put a, a scale to it to measure it.
I see.
But it is, there are, there is a property in between.
Yes.
That is owned by Ellis, I believe.
Okay, yeah. Perhaps one of the realtors in town has it listed right at the moment?
Yes, they do. I think Scott has looked at that, too.
There's only a, like a three, a one, one and three-quarter acre piece for sale right now. That's on, that's on the market. It wouldn't be worth building through a one and three-quarter acre piece. We could acquire the whole piece, and if it's at the right price, we might be interested.
I see.
I think the other thing is for present, for presentation purposes, it might be useful to, to have a, a broader picture, to see how this fits in with, you know, pizza or whatever, and just to see where those land uses are relative to these, because, you know, it's about, I mean, it's the better part of a mile from the highway back to the end of phase three. That's, that's a, that's a long walk. In fact, it's, for me, it's a long enough walk that not many people will walk it. That notwithstanding, you still need sidewalks.
I'm just thinking from the perspective of traffic flow, because you've already got a traffic signal at that intersection up there.
Down by Walgreens, right.
No, I think you were talking about-
No, up at Merrick.
Up by Napa and Crenshaw.
Yeah.
At the top of, way at the top of it.
Do we have any requirements regarding bikes, bike lanes?
I think you'll find bike, pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure mentioned together. I don't think it gets that specific as to bike lanes.
Yeah, but bike infrastructure.
But it's, it's one of those things where the, the ambiguity or the vagueness can go either way. So I think it's valuable, definitely at this stage, to hear that kind of feedback, and then.
Yeah, I would just, thank you, Elena. I think I, I think more I think about this and learn about it, you know, you're going to have, obviously, people with cars, but living this proximate to, you know, our major retail hub in the, in the city, I would imagine folks would like to be able to bike if possible, and we've got the, I guess we're not that far from the trail either, so.
Not at all.
So I would, you know, if I'm moving to Ellsworth, I go, oh, great, this connects to, I can bike to, into town, and I can bike onto the trail, and, you know, that's great. You know, aside from this, I would imagine it'd be helping marketability for the project, but I would like, I would like to see the plans to, can you include safe, you know, biking and pedestrian access to the property?
Yeah, would, yeah, I mean, really, I know you will, you'd really show the cross-section of the roadway that goes through there.
But yeah, if I'm in phase three, I'd rather bike to the Walgreens.
Oh, yeah, for sure. I mean, I don't think you're going to be walking. With the, at the end of phase one here, if the road just kind of goes out and dead-ends, but you could make the argument that the one parking lot adjacent to it provides like a hammerhead kind of thing, is that good enough, or?
Yeah, so I would work with the developer to extend that road out to make it passable with a fire truck if it's a good compacted dirt and nothing else, so it has to be tarred right away, but as long as he gave me a reasonable Y or T turn there for me to get my trucks back out, that would be acceptable, because I know he's, he's, he's pushing into the next phase, which that same road will utilize, so he'll bring that up to the current standards once he gets into that point.
And this, this, all, all the other roads that connect to are private, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, well, how, how does, how does maintenance of those roads, I mean, plowing and things like that work with this new development? Are there agreements to be signed, or have you worked that out already, or?
We've reached out to different people.
Could you, sorry, could you please?
We've reached out to different people, and no one's really gone back to us.
Okay.
And, and one guy, one of the owners, the, the timeshare was in Florida, he never got back to us.
Okay.
So I'm assuming when I don't have anybody get back to me, that I'm taking care of it.
Sir, can you, what's your name, sir?
Scott Palatier.
Scott Palatier.
So how many, on Resort Way, or Eastward Lane, I mean, how many other property owners?
There's three or four.
Three or four, I know one is here. And you have, your property has a full easement over-
Yes.
-that road, so, I mean, at some point, you would have to have some type of agreement with the other property owners as far as maintenance.
I'm going to improve it to make it look nicer into a brand-new project, so, and like, I'd be willing to do probably more than they're going to ask.
And would that include going all the way out to Route One?
Depends on what needs to be done, yeah.
Because I know, on Resort Way, I mean, I wouldn't mind doing at least a, a site visit for the road. I realize we're not going to go out on the property, but, I mean, like Resort Way, one thing I, I wouldn't like about coming out of that, you come out of Resort Way, and there's a utility pull right on your right, and it makes right turns difficult, even though you have two lanes there, it's, it's pretty much impossible to take a right turn without going out into the center lane. And I, I'm out there a lot more, well, I can't remember the last time I was on Eastward Lane, so I drive by and look at it, but I'll have to go out and actually make that turn to see, you know, where the poles are, if it restricts, you know, the, the turning radius, visibility. On Resort Way also, summer, there's, there's a nice patch of cattails that grows-
Yeah.
-real good and blocks visibility. I don't know about the ditches on the side of the road where you're coming out. But within your property itself, I mean, on all these roads, are you anticipating having sidewalks to work all the way through there?
The problem with that sidewalks is the impervious area, and then you're going to lose units and other stuff, you know, so it's not that we're not willing to do it. We'd, we'd have amenities, you know, walking trails and stuff like that, but actual sidewalks, not against it and, and part of it, but, you know, it's, we're trying to stay under the site law.
And I think that's a conversation you should have with your future conversations with staff.
For sure.
Another thing I was kind of wondering, it doesn't show anything, but, I mean, are you proposing any type of facilities for the, for the, and these are all rental units, right?
Yes.
I mean, any type of playgrounds, any type of community buildings?
We haven't put anything into it yet.
What's that?
We haven't, we haven't proposed anything at the moment. So, tonight, we're looking to see what your interest is and what your-
I mean, I think with this many, one hundred forty-two, forty-three units, I mean, I think, and it, you know, it's in a close area, so I think, you know, that would give kids in the area, you know, a place to recreate, whether there'd be, you know, the adults a place to grill or-
We discussed swimming pools and tennis, and basketball courts and things like that, but we haven't got to that moment, you know.
Have, have you gotten to the point where you're talking about the distribution of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom house?
Mostly all two-bedroom, yeah.
They're all market rate?
They're, they're going to be all, yeah, they're not going to be affordable housing, you know, they're going to be general, general-
Could you see your housing?
No.
Okay.
No subsidized, no.
Okay.
Not it's, not that it's the planning board's purview, but are you looking for the city to do a TIF?
No. Just to make it as easy as possible.
Easy is good.
Yeah.
I mean, from my point of view, I'd, I'd certainly like to see something on-site for, you know, the adults, kids, to keep them there, but-
We haven't worked through the liabilities on some of that stuff, so, you know, we're not necessarily going to, it's going to be a gated community, but we're not necessarily going to have a gate, and we're not going to have stuff that's going to invite people from the outside into it. It's not, it wouldn't be a general use for the, you know, general public.
Oh, but some walking trails through the property might be very nice for the residents.
Yeah, with all three phases, I mean, it is a whole neighborhood, really, with all three phases.
We plan to leave in the natural look of it, you know, there's a lot of nice, you know, large oak trees and things like that. We're not going to go on a clear cut and make it a, you know, an urban, you know, city dwel-, you know, unit, it's going to be a country living with, you know, a lot of apartments, you know, so.
Now, these units, I mean, some of them show duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. Are these all single-story, two-story?
The duplexes are a, a single story, and the, the, everything else is a, a two-story.
So the, the ones in phase two that are up on the higher portion closer to Merrick Street you were mentioning, those are duplexes, single-story?
Yep.
Does cluster development apply here at all? Could they satisfy, or?
I think they certainly could do it. I don't think that we require, have a threshold for requiring it.
Require, but.
Are you saying, like, would it be a good idea?
Yeah, has that conversation been had with staff?
We haven't had that conversation.
Have you guys, did you guys look at the cluster development options?
No.
No?
It may be kind of meeting it anyway.
It's different when you have multifamily as opposed to single-family residences. Cluster for single, single-family does work pretty well, because you can have smaller lot sizes, smaller frontages, things grouped together more. You do kind of do it with a multifamily.
Yeah, I mean, I was saying it more, because I didn't know if it would be more advantageous for you folks to-
I can look at the-
You know, because then you can get, that kind of meets what we're talking about, having, providing amenities as far as, you know, standard of living, trails and trees and all that, but you're able to-
Shelley and I broke, we broke it up into different concepts, like we have in the multi, the, the townhouses and single-story, so when you drove in there and didn't feel, it felt like a market neighborhood instead of just a housing complex.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, I think, you know, this is a sketch plan, right? We're just talking, we're trying to see where all, and I think, again, I think it's great. We need housing in Ellsworth.
It's a great concept. On some of these little, not so much in phase one, just in one, you've got one little pod in phase one, which is duplexes, and it looks like you have parking for about eighteen cars for four units. Am I misinterpreting that?
It might be. I've changed it several times, so it may be leftover from, from an earlier version, but it's quite possible. All those things will be cleaned up when we come to the, to the actual sub-.
Very exciting.
I, I think, just to continue the conversation we're having, I would be even more excited about this if we can, if you can, you know, these, you know, walkways, and I understand you're trying to avoid slumming and all that, but I don't know if there's in, ways to provide impervious or versus avoiding, you know, impervious service while still providing-
Walkways can be gravel or stone and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, ways to still address our concerns about-
And we'd like to have stuff like that.
You could make some stuff.
It's not-
Yeah, some impervious, you know, bike paths and walkways and all that, so.
Hundred, hundred and forty acres or so on the total piece, so there's room for that as long as it's not in the wetlands.
Yeah.
There's room to add walking trails, and it would be more the type of environment we want to create, but we just have to have, you know, support.
Yeah, well, I think you've got-
We've got, we've got financial support, but we just don't always have, we don't know what, you know, we're going to have for fights and getting projects through, and it take, if it takes a couple of years to get this done, then, you know, things may change in two years.
Yeah.
We would like to break ground in the fall.
Sure, oh, yeah, I get that. I think, I think you, what you're hearing here is we are supportive, and just, but also, it seems like a great opportunity to provide those amenities in a way that makes sense for your model here, and then it seems like there's an opportunity for a win-win for everyone here.
It's going to be quality housing that the town will be proud of.
Yeah.
You know, it's not going to be, just thrown together, you know.
Now, you said, these would all be two-bedroom units? I mean, have you considered throwing in some three-bedroom?
This size is the biggest thing, and when you, you know, a two-unit, your two-unit or four-unit, say eighty feet long, and then you, you throw a three-bedroom into it, now you're into a, a bigger area, and it's not that we're trying to exclude home, families, it's just that a lot of people in the families don't stay in apartments like this for a long period of time to begin with, and you're not going to, you know, it's, it's a matter of keeping the stormwater and all that to this perspective, you got to, you know, eighty-foot building, you'd be a hundred and some, a hundred and ten-foot building.
And where the roads begin on your property, I mean, you would not be looking to the city to take that over as a public road, or?
It's not worth the argument, it's not worth the fight, it's not-
They couldn't even do that if-
We have to, we have, we can, we-
Roads coming up to it are all-
We'd have to make it back to the main road, so.
Right. I suspect you probably don't want to do that.
If you came to us and said that's what you'd like to do, then we'd be interested in that.
Guess the city probably, I don't think the city will, will make that offer.
Yeah, I save that, I save the trouble, even.
I just had a question, was it Mark? You mentioned coming out on, on Resort Way from the, from, did you think that that intersection was not a good intersection to add traffic to, or are you thinking that it would be okay?
Well, we've got a lot of traffic on Resort Way now, so that, that, and if we go over to Eastwood Lanes, that's not a lot of entering and exiting on a daily basis, as is much higher over Resort Way. And if I had my druthers, I'd, I'd like to see a, um, access up at Merrick as well during high-flow volumes. So if somebody's heading out to go to work, they can get up to the intersection and get into the flow of traffic rather than trying to jump out on Eastwood Way, because they come down that hill at high speeds. They're just coming off the highway, and so any way we can consider lowering the impact there.
As we were, we were talking at the meeting about the potential of coming out onto that property, and it might be an advantageous, uh, task for the owner of that property now anyway, because they could acquire more frontage on a road and maybe, it's not as, it's actually closer than I thought it was when you look at it from where we've put the second phase of development. So it might be a good second, secondary access.
Secondary, exactly.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons also why you need to have a-
A larger plan.
A, a, a bigger picture to see where, how all of these things are linked together, and what's possible, what's not, but, you know, like I say, I go back, this is not a, a, a low generator, especially when you add on to what, what's already there. Traffic's going to be an issue.
We spent several months doing wetlands survey and stuff like that, so if we add on any other product, property to it, then we're going to have to start that process over. And, you know, we did, we had to wait until, you know, May to April, I mean, April to May to do fernal pools.
Sure.
So that was, you know, we could have been several, that's why we weren't here several months ago. So, we would like to do something with what we have now, unless they can't add on for, you know, future use or something like that, but if we add on other properties, I'm saying, to get in the, let's say, get in the timeline of the people that are available, we would be starting to break ground this year.
If the first phase was able to happen, and then looking at the second phase with a secondary access, maybe we could potentially do that.
Yeah.
What, what kind of impacts are there on that, the Carr Brook, you know, area? I mean, it's, because it's really close to phase three.
Yeah.
And pretty close to phase one.
We've, we've, we've kept out of the, any of the setbacks that were required by the-
No, I get that. No, I get that, but what about runoff from the development?
That, that'll all be taken care of in the stormwater permit process. So, we'll have stormwater treatment ponds and detention and/or retention, depending on what's required.
Yeah, even if they avoid sloda, they still trigger stormwater and then the city's stormwater requirements.
It doesn't take long to trigger stormwater in, in, on this case, because it's, you're, you're building a fairly long stretch of drive before you get to any structure. So you could maybe build one or two units before, or two buildings before you trip the stormwater. It just, it doesn't make sense. We'd have to do the stormwater anyway, so might as well do it.
We could propose it all as one phase still if it's easier, but aside, you know, we're, we're gonna take two to three years to build this. So, you're just more honest upfront to say that we're gonna do it in two, three phases. Then come here for one, one phase and stretch it out for two or three years. But it's better for us if we can continuously know that a permits are in place that pause every between each phase. Cause, you know, now we're talking five years out before it'll be done, six years. And rules change before you get that done, so we could be halfway done and you could change your ordinance and then phases two or three could never happen.
Well, I think the approval of the, kind of, whole project approval is advantageous for you, cause you know what you can do.
Yes.
And then we're not saying you have to do it all at once.
Yeah.
So you can do that. Atlanta stopped me at any point if I'm speaking incorrectly.
You're good.
And then if we do, if the city does amend its ordinances, you have a prior approval. And so you potentially wouldn't be subjected, you'd be non-conforming, law or youth grandfather, potentially, so.
And even at the end of phase one, we still did the fire truck turnaround and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Even, even if it's one phase, we can still put those in.
Yeah, and then when you get to phase two, you just keep going, yeah. I think we're on, on the same page with you here, like. The best thing you can do is get the whole thing in front of us, and then if you want to build one, two, then three, it's fine.
Yeah.
We can give you, you know, if it.
And even, even phase one, one building at a time's gonna go up.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So we can, I think we're, let's all, let's see the whole thing, and then we can.
Get all the facts and figures for all three, instead of doing it incremental and.
Yeah, and then you know what, exactly what you can do, and then you can do it as you can. Especially if a really nice walkway is.
I don't know what's wrong with this. I want to apologize to all of you.
At least it didn't ring the way I heard it the other day.
Oh my. So, we're all on board with this, I think, conceptually. And so, what I'm thinking is that let's do what we need to do to get you approval from this board, so you can break ground this year.
The main, the main thing for us to get utilities in during the summertime.
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm very excited about the project.
And Lena, we, far enough along, I mean, what, what's the city's stormwater issue in, in that area?
Oh gosh.
I mean, I, I know you haven't got into the, you know, the nitty gritty, but there's a city's stormwater capable.
I can talk about the issue better than I can talk about solutions. Well, so the Card Brook comment, it was foremost in my mind, because, so, a little bit of history here, bear with me. It belongs on the state's list of urban impaired streams, based on its quality. It was excluded from that list due to a clerical error. So, over the past ten years, at some point, we should have done a watershed-based management plan so that we had a plan for development when we truly end up on that list. Developments of these size, this size, anything that triggers site law, you know. Anyway, that hasn't really been done, and it may become more pressing in the future, so that's very much on my radar. But, I assume DEP isn't going to hold anybody to that urban impaired stream situation yet, because it's not on the list, even though it is, should be on the list. Regardless, we know that Card Brook's issues, which are not terrible. It's more like it's classified as this, you know, nice stream in the woods. And the reality is, because of everything that happened in past decades, once it comes out of this wetland behind this project, it gets hit with High Street. And all of the runoff of the malls and the road and everything associated with it. I mean, there's activity in the upper watershed as well. There's actually, like, it goes out to kind of where the highway garage is, Washington Junction, where it's very sandy and interacts with the aquifer. So, the road salt and the entire watershed could be part of what's impacting it. But just the quantity of stormwater from old development that is receiving minimal, if any, treatment before it hits the brook, is why it has an issue. So, it's something I'm very attentive to. We have better regulation, or better stormwater treatment standards now than we did back then. So it's still, you know, we've got that standard that says you're not gonna increase flow off-site. At a certain point, you're treating for quality as well, and then something of this size would trigger the state, as you mentioned. In addition, so, it's still gonna be a better situation than the immediate commercial that I'm talking about. But I think anything, I don't know if that's you that does stormwater or somebody else in your firm, but I think anything you can do to use, you know, the best techniques. Not just meeting the flow standard, but thinking about things like temperature and whatnot, because that's part of the overall issue with it. You know, temperature of hitting hot pavement and flowing right into the brook. And we'll see how things kind of, you know, I think some would be flowing into the brook before it hits any other development on High Street. And, you know, less amount would probably flow toward the highway. So, there's that. So it's firmly within the Card Brook watershed, which is our most impacted watershed, to answer your question. Even if the stream wasn't meeting its quality standards and, and on that list, stormwater is an issue on a lot of High Street regardless. You've all probably seen, if you drive it when it rains, you're driving in ruts of little rivers. And there's some flooding at times and, and et cetera. So, does that answer the question? It's kind of a long answer, but.
Who do these guys talk to relative to the things you're talking about? You, or Lisa, or, or?
Well, so if they're giving us the preliminary application in the coming months, then they'll provide a stormwater management plan with the associated calculations. Not every board member receives the calculations, but they're in the file and, and I look at them. So they'll, they'll meet the standards that we have. I mean, there's not.
Right, I understand that, but who, who best for them to talk to? Either, I mean, I, I get that there will be a TRT review.
Yeah.
You know, if they submit a, a preliminary plan. Can they talk to somebody beforehand to, you know, see what all y'all are gonna require them to do?
Well, it's in the ordinance, is kind of what I, I'm saying. I mean, if, if there's particular.
Right, but can there be a conversation too?
There can. I mean, yeah, public works.
Okay, Lisa. Okay.
Give it a shot.
I've done stormwater management plans, stormwater treatment designs, subdivisions for decades. And there's a lot of resources at the state level. DEP has a lot of resources and there are standard types of structures that we create. And there are some that are newer, but a lot of the time, you know, you, you use what you know works, because it's worked for a long time. Most of the houses that we do are the, the duplexes or the multi-family have stone drip edges that take the water in from the edge of the roof and into the ground immediately, so it doesn't run off onto pavement and further heat up. And that's an accepted treatment method for the DEP. And so that, that takes care of most of the actual buildings. And then the roads are treated in, in different ways, depending on, depending on how it's laid out. You know, there's a lot of careful crafting of location for making stormwater structures and stormwater treatment systems work properly, when you're, when you're looking at something of, of this size of development. I have a question, another question. Do you approve plans conditioned upon state approvals? Or do you require approvals from the state to be obtained prior to approval from the board?
We mostly, you have to submit proof of application before the final plan review. And then. Then we would condition the approval on receiving your state approvals.
I typically like to wait until after preliminary to submit anything to the state anyway, because if that, something changes from their end, then it's too hard to backtrack with a town or city and start over from that, from that point.
On the topic of stormwater, we have our own threshold, which you already know you'll be over, but we also use a slightly different storm total. So, take a look at that and you can kind of, you'll have to do a different inch number.
For storage, for detention?
I wonder if you can get Larry or Kale to, to do perhaps a satellite photo diagram of where the, not necessarily the whole property with all the contour lines, but I'm, I'm kind of interested in where Eastwood Lane is. I mean, we see property lines, but where the old medical building is, where Eastwood Lanes is. Even going so far towards where the DHS building is, because you have a road coming up in the air. And if I'm not mistaken, they could actually get over to this developments road. I'm just kind of curious how, where all those properties lay in relation to, to the subdivision.
Which, which is the higher level view, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, getting like an aerial view, I mean, I think Larry could pop one out, or Kale could.
Well, I brought, remember, I brought something to the TRT meeting.
There is a small area map on that one. It's probably really small on the, on the reduced size print, but.
But yeah, I mean, I think what we require is a location map. And you've shown all the contiguous property and, under the same ownership on the survey. So, I think that meets our requirements, so if there's anything else you think of that you wanna give, that would be great. But I also can provide the board with something as well. Yes.
Yeah, perhaps that, that location map that you have up in the corner, just. Forget that problem.
Seriously.
I can send that, or put it in your next packets.
That'd be good.
That'd be good, is that what you said?
That'd be good. Yeah, I mean, this is exactly the kind of thing I talk about, so you can start to see whether there are alternatives for entrance or exits or what, what that means to y'all and us.
Do you know if the, the Eastwood Lane road is the, the complete loop? Or just the, the straight section?
Actually, when I open the public hearing, there's a gentleman here that could probably answer that question.
I thought he was about to open the.
No.
Just, just catching up. But yeah, I think it is one street, I don't know, maybe in east.
No, it doesn't loop back around, does it?
No, it, there's two of them.
Yeah.
Really?
And it looks especially weird on the tax map.
Yeah.
Okay. All I did was wander around through empty parking lots back there. I was really kind of fascinated by the fact that there was all these buildings and no cars. Yeah, can you make, can you make maps this size for all of us, as opposed to just sending as a file?
Yeah, I can.
I would like that, personally.
Certainly. Use, put my GIS skills to work.
What's that?
We'll put my GIS skills to work.
Any other questions from the board? Open the public hearing. And I'm inviting Delly to come on down. Delly, could you come up to the podium and introduce yourself? I know who you are. And he also owns the property that we approved the solar farm on, out on the Bucks World.
I'm Del Gaspar, and I own the Eastwood Plaza. I don't know what they've been told who owns it or not, but the guy that is out there is not the owner. I am. And I would, I'd like to clarify just one thing. He came out in the Els of the American paper, which I called the Els of the American about. And I said, former owner of the Eastwood Lane was the one that was involved in the episode. I didn't like that, because I am the former owner. They are renting from me now and they are running it. But he is the one that got the chow molestation, not me. And I've had quite a few people ask me, this is Del, we, we know you for a long time, we would never thought of this. And I said, well, I'll clear it up. I'm not the one. But anyway, as far as you two are concerned, I'd like to sit down and talk to you. That's why I'm in here at the meeting today, is to find out. I actually own Eastwood Lane, the road you're talking about. I have given the car garage at the time, right, and tennis court, right to use it. They still have to come back to me to get rights to take and take the water out and go across it and everything else. Now, the water main for those places goes right up my road. So, if there's anything else I can say to you people that are there, I'd gladly answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Sounds like you ought to be talking to the other a lot.
Well, I, that's what I thought we should do, is to talk between us.
Thoughts on traffic?
Do what?
Thoughts on traffic and entrance and exits?
I can't understand you, sir.
Do you have any thoughts on where you would, considering you know the property so well? Entrance and exits, and we're discussing different options for access to this project.
Personally?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd have to buy some property. But if I was him, shouldn't tell him that, but if I was him, I'd go up to beyond me, where the red light is on Route One. It's already there now. And it's just a short distance from there to his land. So you'd have a red light to come and go on, then he could buy the right of way down off in me and fight with the state for a year or two or three to put in a red light there. I believe it's a sixty-foot right of way.
I believe that big gravel area that's adjacent to your property is owned by Ellis, developer. He's a developer. He's owned that piece for quite a while, but he hasn't done anything with it.
This would spurn them to put something in there. That whole project up on the hills failed anyway.
Now, Delly, as, as somebody goes in the road next to DHS.
Next to what?
DHS building. I mean, they can continue up towards Bolin Alley and actually cut across to, to.
Not, not legally. They do, everybody does it.
Right.
Yeah, but I don't think it's legal.
Yeah.
I think they would stop you there. I wouldn't, because you're not on my property.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious about if, you know, if somebody went up that road, they could end up going over to their development.
Yeah, you go up and go right through their doy, the tennis court doy, I can come right on to my road.
Okay.
I think that's something, you know, we may have to think about just so, whether somebody would come in and out of this development by that route. Yeah, who knows, but I think we just have to kind of keep it in mind, uh.
And the route that goes down via the human services is on all of my property.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else here from the audience, so we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions from the board?
About anything?
Well, just on this development.
Oh, okay. Cause I had another question.
Yep. Nelson, anything? Mark?
Yes, sir.
Staff, anything to bring up?
I mean, there's so much to think about and yet to be determined. Um, so we provided a lot of notes between the group of us, um, at least of things to think about. And, you know, we did have a, a pretty extensive conversation about all the different access options. You know, we're happy to help facilitate conversations with the budding property owners. Um, between myself and economic development and whoever else. Um. Yeah, I think you've hit on all the same sort of topics that we have and we'll, um, wait to see more.
Is the, is the city getting some grant money that specifically has to be used for stormwater? I, I'm gonna just think of some.
They're getting money to, to do the mapping.
Yeah, but I, are you referring to something more recent, acceptance of grant funds?
Yeah.
Recent, more recently?
Yeah.
I don't remember exactly what that was for. Um, yeah, sorry. But we are also, um, we've put in for all kinds of big funding opportunities, including like earmarks and congressional appropriations or particularly wastewater improvements, including on High Street, which I think would support this development. Um, so, different than stormwater.
Yeah.
But, um, there's work to be done to support everything.
Okay, then if there's no other questions, uh, you guys are free to go and we'll move on to staff comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I don't have many comments. I didn't really prepare comments. Um, I think. I know we need to, thank you. Um, we definitely need to get back into the solar question sooner than later. Um, continued to, we basically have, uh, an agreement worked out for the consultant to come and do a joint workshop. Um, kind of final pieces of that.
Well, do we want to, I mean, you're planning on using Woody?
That's, yes.
Okay. Um, would it be prudent to have him meet with us first before we do it?
If you'd like to, I mean, it's just the more, it becomes expensive. Um, and I don't really have money in my budget, so that's part of what has slowed me down is I need to have a conversation with people who do have money in their budgets. And, um. Yeah, I guess, and I, I don't want to get so expensive that then we do need to do procurement, um, an RFP, you know, over a certain dollar threshold. Um, so let me see what I can work out, I guess. Um, I also still kind of, you know, we had a good conversation at the workshop. I know my minutes were very brief because it's a workshop, um, and I still can provide like some of the notes I made. I just, I'm not exactly sure if I want to put them forward for consumption yet. So we could do another workshop on our own. We could talk to Woody. I think his expertise is going to be of more benefit to council in some ways. And we, I still kind of also feel like we need to hear from council what they want so that we don't go through all of this and get there and then get told it's not good enough or something. I mean, that, um.
I mean, maybe a workshop amongst ourselves. I mean, I think, I don't know if anybody else has had a chance to look at the Audubon sample policy for solar, but I think there was a lot of things in there that were, were good and that we could add to our ordinance. Because, I mean, some of the stuff was, was like, uh, a, you know, the clause in there on, on fence and, and having the fence up, you know, so little critters could get underneath. You know, we asked them to do that, but it's not in the ordinance, so why not just put it in the ordinance? Uh, I think there's other things, you know, that we ask them to do. I mean, and I think that, that sample Audubon policy has a lot of those, uh, things. Yeah, that's, that we should do.
Yeah, so.
We're doing, but let's put it in paper.
So how about this? How about if I take, um, kind of the work I had started plus some of the, or all of, you know, pending further conversation, I guess, um, the things that you identified within that model ordinance and give you something that's actually a true start of a draft, um, that I'm comfortable sharing. And, um, we can do a workshop to work through that.
Once we have it.
Yes, and, um, and then work through the council conversation. And then hopefully get into, um, a final version that you can recommend to council.
Well, then, I was gonna ask, I don't think you were here at that meeting, Patrick, but like on, on the decommissioning, you know, the, the insurance policy would have, I mean, they always come into an agreement, you know, Ed, Ed Barrow looks it over. I mean, is there a standard one that we could do, you know, instead of? I mean, I know there's going to be different language, but.
We could have, we could have minimum requirements for any certi bond that says every bond will have, will be for this amount of time and this amount of money and so, and then they would have to whatever.
Could.
Whoever.
Cause one of the.
Don't worry, we have some of that, don't we?
Um, we don't, I don't think we have like a, an official template.
No.
And I haven't had to work one with, with myself, so that's, um, part of.
Well, what kind of threw me was, I, I think it was on the last one we approved, you know, the developer came up with a decommissioning cost that's about half of what all the other plans. And they said, well, this is what's been approved by DEB, EBA, somebody. It's like, okay, why are the, you know, estimates off so much? I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
They were really different.
Yeah, and so, you know, we took them for their word, but are we, you know, twenty years from now, we, we screwing the citizen?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, that's a, a good, I mean, there's ways to be, I'm sure we can find a, a template that says, you know, this industry or this group says these are the minimum requirements, put that in there.
Yeah.
You know, should, you know, if we have a standard, I mean, everyone does this, so there's a million ways to do it. So we just need to be consistent. But yeah, we can do it so we don't have to run the council every time.
Because it seems like we're always, that's the last piece. And it may be a month or two after we approve the plan that.
Yeah.
That their lawyer and Ed get together and, you know, we never see it, not that we're going to understand it other than Patrick.
Don't give me too much of it.
Um, you think we could refer to a specific source of cost estimating?
Well, I think there's, not source of cost estimating, but more of, um, the certainty has to satisfy time period.
Yeah.
Provide for.
Well, actually, along that lines, the, the first, at least the first couple of ones that we looked at, they cited something in New York State. I don't know whether it was a university.
Yeah.
But they cited, I think if you went back to the first couple of original applications, you may find that where they got that, uh, estimated cost from. And, and several of the, the developers on the different projects used that same.
Okay.
Source.
So you get the impression that's the good source?
Yes.
Okay.
That was, well, it was.
Where it was the, the more common source?
Yeah, and it seemed like.
Was it? I mean, more common?
Well, it seemed like the, the.
First couple didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Standard.
Yeah.
They were applying to it.
An industry standard.
But that's what the last guy claimed too, though. I mean, and, and then they were different. I mean, he said it was an industry standard or whatever. It was like, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's definitely a moving target at this point because it's so new to us nationwide. I'd be more interested in looking at like California myself.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we only know the cost of decommissioning where things have been decommissioned.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So.
Is it the cost that we're concerned with or the actual removal of things? Why do we care how much it costs? If we have it labeled out, what needs to be done, no matter what it costs?
Well, the cost concern is, is that basically if they just don't clean it, twenty years from now, the facility's no longer working anymore. And even if someone were to go remove the materials in a certain way that we like, if we calc, if we made them put up a bond of X amount of dollars based on a certain calculation and it was way off and end up costing twice as much, then there's, then there's, you know, you lack the funds for the city to have to go do it. That the whole point is if they just leave, the city has the resources to do it. Rather than we'd have to go sue them and probably some debunk company and.
Could you have estimated the cost per gallon of gas this year?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm just throwing that out.
Maybe there's a range, but the, one of the real problems is that there hasn't been that many things that have really been, uh, decommissioned.
Well, I think.
Years away.
John's point is like, I think everyone's saying is like, we just need to find some, a standard and have that to be the standard. And then instead of getting random ones that we don't know which one is.
Right.
You know, they're using the New York calculation, they're using the, you know, the California calculation and.
But the thing is that everybody that's doing this, whether it's in Maine or wherever, is, is dealing with these decommissioning clauses. And so they must be using, I mean, they must have something in mind, so. I mean, there seems to be a bunch of stuff out there that could be.
Massachusetts is, is about ten years ahead of us with solar and, you know, it's similar climate and everything too, so that might be a good place to look at, yeah.
Well, I think not just climate, but if, if the components, and I don't know that much about this, but if the co, components that need to be removed, recycled, disposed of, what have you, if there's a facility that those can go to in California and there's not a facility in the northeast, New England, Canada, whatever, your costs of actually getting rid of what you need to get rid of or recycling it.
Sure.
But isn't it also anticipating that a market will develop to handle those materials or wastes or what have you in twenty years when they need to be, to be decommissioned? I think that's part of the fear.
Yeah.
But that's a bit of an issue though, that, you know, we've gotten two or three of these things and, you know, one's here, one's here.
These are separate problem domains. Can we accurately predict cost twenty years in the future? No, we're not going to be able to. But that's a separate problem domain is, are we holding all the applicants to the same standard? That's a different question, and I think we're talking about the latter question.
Yeah, and then I think that looping back to that standard and these like calculations, there are folks thinking this through, like, well, maybe they're modeling, right? And like, this is what it may look like in twenty years. And this is, and so they're kind of do, they're doing that work for us. We just have to pick, who do we think is the least bad at this, you know?
And what's the range?
And then what's the range? And then we just pick it and then we have the.
And plus, they're going to be updating those figures however, you know, every two years, five years.
Exactly.
And we say they got to do it.
Yeah, so if we say, and if they're updating it, then so every, we're just saying, these, these folks are, use their model and that it gets updated every year, then we're staying up with it. And then if it turns out that model sucks, then we amend the ordinance to the California model.
There's, there's fair and accurate. We'll shoot for eighty percent accurate, but we can get a hundred percent fair.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
All right, I have a plan then.
Erica.
Any updates on the system planner or?
That's what I was just thinking, yes.
Another member of the board?
Maybe he's even watching right now. Uh, or maybe both of them, both of him.
Does your plan involve delegation? Is that your plan?
Oh, well, not until July.
It's one of my favorite plans.
I'll have to get better at that, actually. Um, no, we made a offer and it was accepted over the long weekend. So all that's left is this person needs to find a place to live, so if you got any leads.
Get to work on.
Don't say them out loud on TV.
Can he go to the head of the line on John Bates' properties?
Well, what is there, like a quid pro quo?
I would not want to say that.
We put a condition on.
No, I think he's got some leads, but, I mean, seriously, if you have anything in mind, let me know.
Build accessory dwelling in a senior property.
Yeah. So, yeah, um, I'm looking forward to that, maybe.
Wait, does he start?
Well, if all goes well, um, right after Fourth of July, so you might get to meet him for your next meeting.
Well, congratulations.
And you still have somebody in mind for the board?
I do, and so, um, I was kind of holding back on it just to see if we got any other letters of interest because I had these flyers out there for, um, three different boards. And we haven't really, um, so this June council meeting is when, actually I had a note to ask you aside, but I believe Patrick and Nelson, both of your terms expire this year. So I just need to know if you're still willing to serve. Um, so if you could just email me or something that I can give to the clerk, um, to indicate that you're good, which I hope you are.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
I was hoping.
So anyway, sorry, I'm like deviating from the point again. Um, because all those appointment, appointments happen at the June council meeting, I'd like to recommend the.
This is still on the record, right?
Yeah.
Still on the record.
I am willing to serve another term.
True, that's a record, perfect. Nelson, reappointments?
No.
No pressure.
We need you as secretary.
I'm feeling zero pressure.
When you get home, you can always send it from the higher.
Then you would hope to present the other person's name as an alternate number to council in June?
Correct, yeah, yeah. So if it were, if we had interest from more than one person, I think we'd do interviews, but it's somebody we all know and.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, yeah, I, I feel like I, I mean, I guess it's public, but it's Mike Henge, um, who was the, the former fire inspector, preceded.
The fire guy.
Yeah, preceded Thomas.
Fire guy senior.
Um, long time, I think he's been on Ellsworth Fire since like before I was born.
He missed us. Missed the act.
Yeah, so I'm planning to provide a memo to council to have him appointed.
Fantastic.
Hard to argue lack of qualification.
What's that?
Said hard to argue lack of qualification.
Oh. He's very, very qualified, a very, I mean, I came back after he retired, but I had worked with him before. He is a very thorough person, I would say.
I'm, I'm hoping to see some battles.
Fire guy battles?
Yeah.
Yeah, fire guy.
That'd be wet.
Yeah, bro.
Between, between him and I.
That's right, he's the wet guy.
Yeah, you think that now.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's my resource I still utilize every once in a while when I'm stumped or I can't find something. I, he's my phone call away to sit there and to help guide me to this, go to this section, to this section because there's an exemption for this, it's on this page, but it's in this chapter, go to here. It, one of those type of questions that are not so easily like follow the trail because it, it tells you where you need to go type, type thing. So, yeah, I still, I still, I do utilize him for, for that stuff. And he has been a great, he still is a great asset for me. And it would be even better if he is on the board because then it definitely helps emphasize a lot of the stuff, uh, that way as well.
Two quick questions, comprehensive plan, question mark?
Is it a quick question?
Well, I, I want it to be a quick question, just like, yeah, you know, in a month or whatever.
Like start the steering committee?
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, um, well, let me get an assistant and let me, you know, write some solar amendments and, um, and tell your counselors to support the budget.
So nothing happens so they can pass the budget? So nothing happened, so they passed the budget, is that correct?
I mean, that wasn't the plan, I would have liked to at least had the RFP rolling and the steering committee rolling, but it's just been challenging. Before that.
At this point, you're still lacking a little bit of funds.
It's only seventeen in the FY twenty-three budget, brings us to a round figure, which should be hopefully sufficient to do what we need to do. Yeah, so it's, I would say that the next step, you know, the, writing the RFP is kind of just me work, but actually figuring out, figuring out how we want to structure a steering committee under the auspices of the planning board is the other big thing. Because I would, I would envision at minimum a steering committee like contributing to the recommendation of who to select through that RFP.
Oh, for the consulting?
Yes. Yeah, so like at least have, I don't know, I mean, I think Bar Harbor did it differently. They picked a consultant first and then finalized the committee. I think it could be concurrent, whatever I can get done first, I think, is probably the goal. And it will help to have another person in the office again. But we also have some big projects coming up right now too, don't we?
Second quick question then, in the workshop, there was this whole big long list of stuff that we talked about.
Yeah.
Were there actually, actual assignments that came out of that for the board or whatever or? I don't, I don't, I mean, I know it wasn't, it didn't seem to be was written down, but there was like, oh, yeah, you could help do that kind of stuff or whatever.
Well, yeah, you had asked that question about how can we help.
Yeah, I probably did.
And I don't know if it was at that workshop or elsewhere, but, I mean, if there's a, like in your case, Rick, we know that you love the science of traffic, right?
The science of traffic.
Or art, yes.
I love the music of traffic.
So, you know, if you are moved to, if you're moved to put time into something like that and.
Well, I mean, I guess the question comes not just for me, but, you know, here's, here's a list of what we'd like to have done of all of these other topics and so forth.
Yeah.
And, you know, we could step up individually or collectively, you know, some people may not have the time to do that, others might, or the expertise.
Right, I mean, so using the traffic example because it's easy, I feel like the threshold for a traffic impact analysis is buried in a like reverse psychology section of when it applies. So, you know, is that on my list of things to fix? Yeah, but it, you know, if you have an idea of how we could work toward that, kind of structure that section of the ordinance properly, by all means, I would accept the help. I mean, I don't want to assign you work. It sounds like you want me to assign you homework.
No, well, I just want to know what could be done that's useful to you. I mean, that's, that's the thing, that comes within the purview of the planning board.
Yeah.
It's not hard.
Take the initiative, you just go draft your new traffic?
Yeah, there you go. Well, no, well, anyway, I'll reach out to you.
Kind of speaking about traffic, I mean, Steve said, when I asked him about contacting MDOT on the Garland Road, I mean, I don't understand why DOT wouldn't be contacted.
Oh, yeah, I think they would be very interested to know about that.
Although I think the impact is minimal.
Well, yeah, yeah, but.
Let's not discuss it here now because you're not reviewing that project right now, but I'll follow up on it for sure. I believe that DOT wants to know about anything over five or six houses.
Nothing worse than just contacting them if they want to follow it up. That's up to them, if they don't, that's up to them.
Yep, I have a good contact there and I've had good conversations on a lot of topics, so. Yeah, I think I've mentioned to various of you in different settings, you know, outside the meeting, that I think it's a challenge to allow that kind of branching development off of private roads and how does that work? How is that orderly development? That's the whole purpose of planning. It evolved to get to camps on lakes and to get into the woods to harvest and, but when you start doing it today and look at the cumulative impacts, just, it's no different than the same thing happening right off of Route One in our major commercial district. It all needs to work together. Sometimes I feel like the ordinance doesn't really contemplate that and we end up in a weird situation. I'm not saying it doesn't, I just, with the projects, with sketch plans, I'm not going all the way down the rabbit hole of every standard that applies until I have information to send me down that rabbit hole, you know, so.
Okay, I guess we're done. Motion for adjournment?
Yes.
Check it out. Okay, on paper.